They will be identifying challenges, ongoing challenges, and meeting the needs of children and youth and adults and young adults on the spectrum within their cultural context. I'll be asking them three questions. I'm going to read the questions to you so that sets the context, and then I'll go back to question one. They'll spend about five minutes each until three questions. They get 15 minutes each, 45, 15 minutes left for questions from the audience. How's that sound? Good? All right. So, "They know I've asked them to frame their responses to successes and challenges in meeting the needs of students on the spectrum within the context of inclusive education and culturally responsive pedagogy. According to Ontario's Equity in Inclusive Education Strategy since 2009, it's education based on the principles of acceptance and inclusion of all students. And culturally responsive pedagogy involves careful acknowledgement, respect, and understanding of difference and its complexities. To support culturally responsive pedagogy in our schools, educators, including school and system leaders, promote reflection, face complex issues head-on across their disciplines, find ways to honor community, and support authentic collaboration among all stakeholders." So, I will read the three questions, and then I'm going to introduce. "In your school board, what does a school look like, sound like, and feel like when the school is successful in promoting reflection, honoring community, and supporting authentic collaboration among staff, students, and parents when aspiring to meet the strengths and needs of students on the autism spectrum?" I'll be repeating it again for them. "Number two, in your school board, how do you develop culturally responsive educators who hold positive and affirming views of students and the ability of all to learn and achieve? How do they, from their respective positions, and I'll announce who they are, demonstrate genuine respect for students and their families as well as a strong belief in their potential? I suggested responses can focus on strategies that include holding high expectations for learners, and might not be doing that all the time, recognizing and honoring the strengths that these students' lived experiences and/or home culture bring to the learning environment of the classroom. Three, what challenges and barriers remain for your schools with respect to creating the conditions for learning for all students, including students on the spectrum? Again, responses may include challenges around health and safety concerns, labor laws, Human Rights Code, the duty to accommodate once we've accepted the learners into our schools. It might be they're speaking to behavioral challenges that lead to suspension or exclusion." Okay, so that's a mouthful. So now I'm going to introduce. Closest to me is Melissa McCammon and Kim Ford. This way. That's that York Region District School Board delegation, and maybe others that have heard from beyond there. They are both special education consultants, so that's a great perspective as they go to several schools to support teachers and families and the students themselves on the autism spectrum. And from there, we have Dr. Brendan Brown, Superintendent of Education, Special Education Services with the Halton Catholic District School Board. Welcome. And finally, from the Toronto District School Board, we have Maria Antonio Amrich and Randolph Sealy, who are both social workers, another great perspective, and they also support a number of students with autism in their board. So, welcome. And if you want, I can start this way for question one, which I'll repeat. Yeah, okay. "In your school board, what does a school look like, sound like, and feel like when the school is successful in promoting reflection, honoring community, and supporting authentic collaboration among staff, students, and parents when aspiring to meet the strengths and needs of students on the autism spectrum?"
Okay, am I on?
You're on.
When I spoke to Lindy yesterday, we talked a lot about... This is an area I'd like to brag about a little bit because I'm really proud of the work we're doing in York Region around inclusivity. Currently, I would say part of our Board Improvement Plan looks at, we're looking at three areas, math, mental health, and modern learning. And it was funny, when we first talked about modern learning, the student services, so our consultants or special education, anyone working in special education, we kind of stood back and said, "Hold on. We've been doing modern learning for a really long time." And so I think something we take a lot of pride in is the personalization of the work we do with our students with ASD and their families. We work very closely with our families and our community partners as well as our students to really make sure that we are personalizing the work for the kids, that it makes sense within their frame of reference, within their social identities, as well as with themselves as learners and how their families see them as learners. We also, I believe, I get to go to every school in York Region as an ASD consultant. And I'm incredibly proud of the work that our schools are doing around community and inclusivity. We have a lot of programs and professional learning happening for teachers, educational assistants, administrators, the entire system that comes, and including students. And I think that's important around peer awareness. How do we help our students with ASD develop authentic relationships within their school building? What kind of work can we do to make sure that our teachers were kind of doing the full gamut of inclusivity? And I believe that that is happening. There's always work to be done, but I believe wholeheartedly that is happening. We currently receive some funding from the ministry, and we decided to focus that funding on after-school social skills programs that are completely guided by the families. So, the families come in to meet with the school team, and they choose a goal for their child with their child support. And that is the focus goal for the entire social skills intervention versus us making that decision. And it's been an amazing experience because we're realizing often our families do have different goals for their children that are related to their life experiences and what they know their children need going forward. And the overall, our peer awareness, the work we're doing around World Autism Day, when you're present in our schools, at least I feel it, this work is my life's passion. And when I'm in a building, I feel the love of our students and the work we're doing towards it. I'm a storyteller. Everyone in York Region, they're all smiling because they're like, "Oh, here she goes." But Lindy says, "Okay, if I told the story," and I think it's an important one of the experience of inclusivity. I was in teaching a community class for students with ASD before I went into this role, and my husband took that class, which sounds weird, but I have a bit of a control over that. So, he now teaches that class. And it came from a school we had been recognized with special education advisory committees. It was a very, very inclusive building. And I came into this role, and he said to me, "I want to surprise you with something. You know, mid-January, you need to come out and see something." And what had happened was York Region has a hockey tournament. And some kids in his classroom with ASD had come forward and said they want to try out for the hockey team. There were kids on all teams in York Region with ASD. That wasn't the surprising part. The surprising part was this young man was a hockey player, so that was okay. But two more students from that community class came forward and made the same request. One child had played hockey once, but wasn't allowed to stay in the league because of behavioral challenges. And another student was new to the country and had never put skates on in his life. But all three students wanted to play. And so the teachers in that building decided they would rent ice time. Of course, that ice time was at 6:00 in the morning. And five teachers said that they would head out and try to teach them how to skate in time to try out for this hockey tournament. And they did. And two out of the three students were ready. And one student, the student who had never skated before, still wasn't quite safe enough to play the game. And so the teachers and adults in that building felt that they had done the best they could, right? To be inclusive. They had done the practice, they'd done the work, they'd worked with the families. But this young man wasn't safe. And so then when they told the team, the junior hockey team, that he wouldn't be playing, that afternoon, ten eight-year-olds stormed the classroom and said, "You're not being inclusive enough. We have an idea." And I think that was the culture of that building, that the kids, these young men, had said, "We can do more. You guys have taught us to do more, so I'm sure we can do more." And their idea was to help him onto the ice skating circles around him and keep him safe, and then they would get off. Well, then their really inclusive coaches became a little competitive. They were thinking, "That's a bit of a power play. I don't know about this." But the students insisted. And that day in January, they asked me to come out. I got to come out and see, with his family, with the other students from community class in the entire building, that school, watched this young man with the support of his peers play in a hockey tournament. And the really neat part wasn't just that building. It was that every other kid on the ice recognized what was happening and stopped the game, passed the puck, shared the game, and then we'd go back into the regular tournament when we left the ice. So, to me, that's a picture of the work we're doing. Of course, there's still lots of work to be done, as there always will be in inclusivity and in ASD, but I think we've got a good start.
So, I guess I'll, as a superintendent, I'll give maybe a 40,000-foot look at what we're trying to do and certainly recognizing how that impacts the story that you tell about the hockey tournament. I appreciated the question in terms of maybe just that you talked about how we're aspiring to meet the strengths and needs. And I think that term "aspiring" is really important because none of us, we recognize that we, nothing's perfect. We're doing the best we can, and we're working with human beings. We're working with individuals, and we're trying our best. We're always aspiring to be more than what we currently are. And I'll talk a little bit about that maybe and some things I talked about in the response to the second question. So, from our perspective, and I've got some folks here today, some BCBAs and social workers, they do hear us talk about this a lot. But we think a lot about culture, in terms of our organizational culture. What does that mean? So, what are the norms of our organization? Like, what do we collectively believe in? And how does that influence what we would call the five Ps, people, places, programs, policies, and processes? So, fundamentally for us, and we talk about this a lot, we believe that ideas matter, and we believe that ideals matter. And we talk about that in the context of, we recognize that you could certainly use a negative term or a term that's become negative to be idealism, as being dismissive. But we think that ideals matter. So, we really think about ideals as being like that creative "what if"? Like, what if this was possible? What would that be? So, when we talk about ideals, we try not to think about measuring them by whether or not we achieve them. We talk about ideals by measuring them by whether or not they point us in educationally defensible directions. And so what ideas do for us is we think about the "what if"? What could be possible? And our ideas help us to move toward that goal. So, to give a tangible example, what does that mean? For us in our system, our ideal, something that we talk about a lot, is wouldn't it be ideal if every teacher in the system, every staff member in the system said, "I've got this. I can do it." That's our ideal. So, we really want to focus when that's our ideal. We want staff to feel comfortable and feel competent in what they're doing. Now, there's not a, we're not talking about expertise. We're talking about recognizing, we want to move toward increasing capacity because we recognize that students do best when those who are with them all day have the most, you know, opportunity to help them to be successful. So, we try to shift our thinking a little bit toward teacher capacity as being our key focus. And a lot about humility. And humility is that we are not expected to be experts in everything. I know certainly I'm not an expert in anything. But I will commit to learning more. And that's what we try to move forward as our ideal or our system. So, we think that competency matters. We feel that competency matters. And then we focus a tremendous amount of our work and our attention on building the capacity of our staff. So, what, to answer the question specifically, what does this look like and what does it sound like in schools and our system? I guess it would be, the idea would be, would be ambitious humility, or ambition, where we want, we think that would be a great indicator in our school. So, recognizing that we don't have all the answers, but we'll commit to learning with individuals, with families, cultures, to support students, to help them to achieve success. So, a welcoming, inclusive environment for us is really collaborative with parents and also recognizing and respecting the practice, the scope of practice between home and school. So, where does that intersect? And then where does that diverge? And celebrating the good reasons for both. So, what that looks like on the ground, I guess I'll talk about maybe a little bit more in the second question. But we try to really move these ideas forward in big picture ways because for us, we like to shift, we started to shift really ideas about how do we get more support for students to how do we accrue students' independence? And that's a bit of a mind shift for a lot of us, certainly in school boards, and certainly culturally as well, because we realize that student outcomes have a lot to do with the capacity of the person that's with them all day. So, that's a big focus of the work that we do, and a lot of our structures and practices support that. But I will turn the mic over again.
So, I'm a social worker in the autism team with the Toronto Easter School Board. I've been in the team for about 15 years since it started. So, I've worked in all areas of board. So, how does a school feels, looks like that is inclusive? Has changed over years. Since I started, I think, we started from really teaching what we called Tier One strategies to teachers' building capacity. And that has shifted a little bit to sort of teaching inclusive education, teaching differentiated instruction in the classroom to address the needs of different learners. And I'm also looking at moving more into independence rather than having a one-to-one support worker, although maybe sometimes needed. But I'm looking at how can the students be more independent? How can the students, we focused different years on, are they going to be doing the same testing as all the students are doing? Are they required to do EQA testing? Or are they not accepted? So, I think there's all discussion about having children with autism included in every aspect of this educational life of the school. And how does a school looks like for me this today when I go in as a consultant to a school? It's a school that has access to, that allows, it's easy to access. Parents can access easily. The staff speak with the principal, speak with the VP very easily. There is a communication with parents. It might be a parent center in the school. There is a school-wide self-regulation program that addresses the self-regulation issues of all students in the school. So, we focus on what is good for all, what's good for some, and what's good for a few within the school setting. So, that's how it looks like to me at this point when I go into the schools, which has changed considerably since the beginning when I started. Because at the beginning, we're really looking at, you know, what is autism? It's the first time I have a child with autism. I have no knowledge of autism. When today, we have children, teachers who are trained on ABA techniques. They have done considerable training. And there is a whole training piece of building capacity from the Special Education Department laid out every year in terms of the needs. And it might look as a targeted PD. So, we go into the schools, and we might focus on that particular school and focus a target PD. So, we will develop a PD for that particular school addressing the needs of the child with autism that we have referral for. So, that's how it looks like to me at this day. I missed some things, but parent engagement and learning and teaching building capacity within the school.
Okay, I'm listening very carefully, and thank you for your contribution so far. I'm going to change, I'm not going to change the second question on you to make you nervous. I'm just going to, I've asked you how you develop culturally responsive educators who hold positive and affirming views of all their students, including all the students on the autism spectrum. How do you show genuine respect for students and families and a strong belief in their potential? So, we talked about high expectations for all learners. But you all mentioned professional development designs. Can you possibly, and they're probably saying, "She didn't send this to us." But in your, in your example, a concrete example perhaps of a professional design for learning for a particular group, maybe it's educational assistance, maybe it's teachers, maybe it's superintendents. What would that look like to say that you're moving in that direction of practice?
I think one of the things that we're doing now at the school board in our department specifically is that we're trying to increase the knowledge and capacity of our social workers because they are throughout the whole system. And we know that parents need support throughout the process. And sometimes having the educators onesies. I think somebody who understands the external systems is really vital and important. And the connections that we make with our external casodotals is vital in helping the families connect to external support as well. So, I think that's one of the things we've been doing, increasing capacity of that.
I think actually some of the, what I prepared think would be concrete for folks. So, as we kind of continue that idea, when you think about, okay, there's this idea of ideal, Brendan, that you're talking about this. I want all staff to say, "I've got this." Okay, so what does that, what does that mean? So, you talk about when, how do we hold positive affirming views of our students? We talk in our system a lot. Staff that are here today from my board will, you know, will say, "Yes, we do this all the time." But we have five foundational assumptions. Five assumptions, we talk about these five assumptions all the time. And these assumptions are what ground our work. These five assumptions are, we believe that all students can learn. We believe that teachers have the greatest influence over student learning. We believe that we can all be more than what we currently are. We need support and professional development structures to be so. And we accomplish as best a partnership with parents. Five simple foundational assumptions that ground all the decisions that we make. So, any decision we make in our spec ed for sure and certainly in our board are grounded in those decisions. So, it's just basically, all students can learn is a growth mindset. It's just that we recognize every student, every student has a trajectory. And our role is to help them to get there. That's responsibility on us. Teachers have the greatest influence over student learning. That's just with them all day long. And the research supports this. Principals have the second most influence over student learning. They create that culture in the schools. But when we, when we recognize that, it really focuses our support. We need to focus on teacher capacity in order to help. It's not about how do we bring in more experts to take over? It's about how can we work within our scope of practice to improve outcomes for students? Our third assumption is that we can all be more than what we currently are. And that's, we kind of think about that as a liberating notion that liberates us from the expectation of expertise. That we're going to get students that we think, "Wow, I've never met anybody like this before, but I'm going to find out, and we're going to work together." And that's going to be our approach. We require support and professional development to be so. So, that's how, when we believe all students can learn, we believe that teachers have the greatest influence, we believe that we can all be more than what we currently are. Then what does that look like in practice? So, our structures, for example, I'll talk about in a second, and what is our professional development focused on has to be grounded in those very simple ideas. And the last part about the fact that it's best accomplished in partnership with parents, that really is the key for us because we recognize parents are our greatest partners. And they realize what we're doing at school and what we're doing at home and how we collaborate together, great things are possible. So, we talk about these things all the time. And so what does that look like for us? So, from a structural perspective, structures, we've committed a lot of resources to what we call it itinerary teachers. Boards have different variations of them. They're kind of like master teachers or itinerary means traveling, right? So, they travel around and support. And their role is to not to take over in a classroom, but it's really to model and coach teachers, to help to work beside them shoulder to shoulder, to help to increase capacity. But the idea is always toward helping that teacher to say, "I've got this," and take over and do good things on their own. I mean, it's a huge amount of money when you think about these teachers that we're paying, you know, usually top salary for because they're our master teachers. And they're not in front of kids all day long, but they're focused on system capacity building. We also put a big investment in, for us, I mean, we're a 35,000-student school board. So, we're on the high end of a medium-sized board or the low end of a large board. I mean, when you look at it provincially. Certainly with, between Toronto and York, we are a small board. But we have four and a half BCBAs on our team, and we know the boards that are triple the size of us that have one. So, we put a focus on, and focus some of our resources on who can make the biggest system impact. So, when we use our BCBAs, a lot of their focus is working with our academic team to be coming up with ways to support practice in schools. It's not about how do we get more people in to take over to work with the students? It's how are we increasing capacity? So, when we look at what all this looks like in practice, we look at this through our five Ps, people, places, programs, policies, and processes. When what we believe in is reflected in each of those five Ps, that makes a huge difference for us. So, with simple practices that are illustrations of this, which I think was what Lindy was asking, we recognize that, and I talked about this a little bit, that student outcomes increase when students increase their independence. Like, their post-secondary options are better the more independent they are. So, we've been really intentional about focusing on moving away from the idea of how do we increase student support and moving toward the idea of how do we increase student independence? So, for us, what that looks like is it's tied in with our educational assistant allocation process, where we spend a lot of time working on, we call it our independence rubric. And for every student who might need the support of an educational assistant in the board, we go through this rubric to measure their independence and to be looking at how we're tracking their goals over time. We do this a couple times a year. And our focus, when we're talking with schools and with parents, is about how are we increasing a student's independence? How are we going to get the student more support necessarily? And tracking that over time changes the way that we do things, changes the way that we allocate our resources because we're allocating our resources based on how we're making students more independent. So, there's that structure in place about our rubric. And then we have an allocation tool that helps us to send out our resources. With our BCBAs, we do something that we developed called ABA for All. And ABA for All in our board, it looks like we have our BCBAs and our academic itinerary team come together. We use some of our Autism Ontario program funding money to release teachers at each school. And it's all about the principles of ABA. So, I mean, PPM has been out, you know, for over 10 years now. Yeah, we're always looking at increasing our practice around the principles of ABA. So, recognizing within our scope of practice as educators and education, how are we increasing the capacity of our staff throughout the system? So, we have focus days and then follow-up support, working on real goals in schools, and then days that follow that to be really looking at how we're supporting what's happening in schools to increase teachers' capacity around how they're supporting all students. And sometimes in particular, the students who might be on the spectrum. We moved, I think most people that are familiar with school boards are, recognize something called multidisciplinary teams. And we intentionally moved away from that this year. And actually, last year, we've developed a new process called transdisciplinary rounds. And in that process, it's really focused on how we can get together to solve challenges at the level at which they reside. So, it's really about how we are helping schools, we come together as teams when we have a specific situation. And we sit down and we talk about what are our goals? What are our strategies? We don't spend any time, what we call it, "marinating" in the problem. We spend time focusing what are our solutions. And really, the idea is moving solutions back to the school because that's where the solutions are going to be most effective, and they're going to be long-term. So, a lot of our work, I guess, as I connect back to the idea of "I've got this," and the idea of what our foundational assumptions is, is that some of the programs and practices that we put in place are really focused on school-based solutions. So, how are we supporting teachers with their practices in schools? How are we doing this with our educational assistants, which we're doing as well? And using our resources to have the greatest system impact? We are, we are less focused on how we're providing individual support to individual students and more on how we're making a wider impact in where our students are every day. And we're fairly proud of the work that we're doing. We were shifting some cultural norms in our boards around who's responsible for students with special needs. with special needs. And we feel really proudly about that. We don't have conversations much anymore about the student needs to go to a different program or who's gonna come in and take over for me. Our conversations are around, this is our work, we're gonna be right here with you, but this is a student in, in your classroom and we're gonna work through it together. I'm not gonna tell you that it's been, it's been easy work and we're still, we're still working on it. But when you talk about those five foundational assumptions, it's hard to argue with them. I've yet to actually talk to an educator in our board, certainly throughout the province, that would argue with the fact that we believe that all students can learn, teachers have the greatest influence, we can all be more than what we currently are, all of us, everyone in this room, that we need support, professional development to be so, we do a best of partnership with parents. I've yet to argue with somebody in any fulsome way about those ideas. And that really, when we, when we embrace that idea, that really does change our practice and that really does sort of move us forward in our thinking and that allows us to put in structures that support that. Because we can't say we believe in something and then keep doing things the way we've always done. We also can't put new structures in place without starting with a Y. So we are very aware of that with the work that we're doing and we do think that it's an ongoing project, but we think we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, so talking about professional learning and the Y or DSV, very similar, all of our current work focuses on student independence. I think we're in the same boat. We can't continually focus on adult supports for our students with ASD. We've looked at the stats, we know the numbers and we need to look at student independence. So when we look at our professional learning as a department, what we do is we, we do take a lot of data from our, the professional learning of previous years and then we are constantly changing those goals based on the data we are taking from families, teachers, educational assistants. We work in collaboration with incredible teams of student services, including psychologists to do work in mental health and ASD, our speech and language pathologists, OTs. We have 12 ABAs who work with us on our, our work and as well as ISWs, cert support. So we come together as teams to develop the professional learning. So we have a lot of different eyes and diverse lenses on our work. We also try to move forward over the year. This year, we're very proud of some work we've done around intermediate ABA. We have some very skilled teachers in our system who have done sort of introductions to ABA work and we're looking for more in order to support their students even better. So we've had a series of CICS with our applied behavioral analysis where they're really teaching those functional behavioral analysis and letting our teachers get a hold of this work, similar to Halton where our teachers need to be our leaders of our kids. And we also do a lot of work with our, what we, for lack of a better word, our more typical education classrooms. Our students with ASD are supported throughout our school system, whether it be a resource room, a community classroom or a typical education classroom. And so we're ensuring that our professional learning is meeting the needs of teachers across the system. Not just our teachers who are working specifically with children just with ASD, but across the system because we hold the same principle that our students are all of our students and everyone in the building needs to know how to support, recognize and celebrate the learning of our students with ASD.
I did, I did put you on the spot, but you won't boast of the challenge of concrete examples. We're going to talk about number three, challenges and barriers that remain for your school. I'd like to talk in terms of access and equity and inclusion, in terms of barrier removal and barrier prevention. You did talk, I just want to bring this up, everybody talked about promoting independence of the student rather than think of it from a support perspective. Just my personal bias, I think they go together. So some will say, well, without that support, they're actually gonna become more dependent than they were before. I'm just gonna start the barrier conversation even around some of our beliefs. Or others will say, well, there's a finite number of educational assistants and no, we don't want the students not to be, not to have shared ownership by the teacher, not overly dependent on an educational assistant. What work might there be? And then discuss any other barriers and challenges in helping educational assistants who have their own training, care for the children deeply, how do you promote when they are working in a shared model of delivery among students? How do you help them learn in professional development to promote students' independence, to keep as many pathways open, credit accumulation, whatever, whatever it's going to be? What work is being done there in teacher teams perhaps with teaching assistants to promote independence but still offer this support to continue?
We, we make sure that whatever we're offered to teachers is offered to educational assistants. The challenge is, it's not always offered during the day when we need our educational assistants supporting some of our, our students. But we do offer on PA days, we offer the same workshops that we're offering to teachers and other educators to our educational assistants so that teams can come together and learn the same. Currently, we're doing work around structured teaching. And so we ensure that we have that same workshop available to our educational assistants, not only to, so they understand the systems that teachers are putting in place, that they need, we couldn't do the work without them and they need to be honored with the hard work that they do. So we do offer similar or the same professional learning to all of our education assistants at different times. I think the other important piece is that as itinerant teachers or other supports going out into the school, in student services, we continually reiterate the importance of working with the team in the space, whoever that primary person is and honoring the work that that person is doing with the child. And then reminding them too, is when we are looking at supports together, what supports are they currently using and what might those supports look like if we are trying to increase independence? But I agree with you, Lyndi, we need, we often need a person to increase the independence. It's not that we're dropping our kids with ASD into schools and saying, you got this. We really need to develop systems, programs, interventions and then have our supports, our teachers, EAs, help develop those. Those things often need to be directly taught and we don't want our kids stand up in situations where they aren't able to use those skills because to me that can take away from inclusivity. If we are putting our children in places that they aren't ready for with the skills they need to be successful. So I do think it goes hand in hand, but I think, I think we can, need to continually move towards the idea is we are directly teaching the skills towards an independent and a personalized life and personalized goals for our students.
And are there any other barriers you'd want to speak to that you wanna bust next or prevent from becoming a barrier?
Yeah, well, there is. I mean, what, what do we know about ASD? I've been working in autism for 20 years and there's the cliche, if you've met one child with autism, it's not a cliche. I, every, the spectrum is this beautiful range of amazing skills and gifts and things that have been, been so enlightening to me and brought beauty to my life and then there's some real challenges. And I think that we have to acknowledge those challenges with an asset-based lens to look at our kids and say, you know, this is a challenge for our teachers, it's a challenge for our principals and our superintendents. But if we go in as, as teens and as educators to say, we believe this child can learn and we will do everything we can to meet those challenges and help support the child in overcoming them, I think that's, I think that's the challenge for all schools right now is that we, we, the needs of our students can be high at times and we're all trying to meet the needs of our more complex learners, but we're working at it every day.
So, yeah, so I would challenge you, Lindsay, uh, Lyndi, sorry, I would challenge you in terms of that idea, yeah. Because while I understand what you're saying, unless it's thoughtful and intentional in terms of the educational assistant is part of the plan, not that the educational system is the plan, it's a really important distinction to make. So I think making a statement simply is saying that they go hand in hand, unless we're thoughtful and intentional about it can allow us to revert back to that idea of, okay, yeah, we need more EAs in order to work side by side with the student. Because our, I really, it came to me a couple of times when I, as a moral imperative for me in a way, I remember chatting with a, with a parent one time and he called me and said, my, I understand that my, my daughter is, you're cutting my daughter's EA support. It's being reduced from 1.0 to 0.75 and that sort of percentages was something we also addressed. And, you know, Dr. Brown, I'm gonna sue you and I'm gonna sue the board and my daughter's gonna be credit earning and is going to be not in any contained classes, is gonna go to university and blah, blah, blah. Great, so tell me about your daughter. He said, well, she's in grade six now, she's going to be in grade seven next year. I said, she's in grade six with a full-time educational assistant and your goal is to be, and I didn't, I mean, I don't know the student at all, it was a phone call, but your goal is to be college-bound, credit-earning. We have a lot of work to do in terms of, so that's, and the thing is, I take that, that's on me, that's on us. So that's why having those conversations about that being a moral imperative to make sure students are as independent as possible is a really important point. So when, when I challenge you on that, I'm saying, it can go hand in hand as long as it's thoughtful about how are we, we looking toward what our goals are. We're revisiting our goals all the time in order to be making sure that we're heading in the right direction. But that, and, and they can, you know, we, our goals could be independence and we might never ever get there. But the educational support needs to be focused on, we, our EAs, and we talk about this a lot, are facilitators of independence. And, you know, sometimes we were cheeky and we say that, you know, they're collectively aspiring toward redundancy. We recognize the, the important work that they do, they do tremendous work for us, but their goal is to really make themselves redundant, to really make sure that our students are, are in partnership with our programming and our teachers as independent as possible. So my challenge is just that we don't simply say they go hand in hand, they need to be really thoughtful and intentional.
Let me, let me just clarify. I didn't mean hand in hand that way, just, just so you understand. When we're talking about culturally responsive practices, how would the parent, what I'd ask is how would you be communicating with a family, for example? Because right away, we're gonna assume, well, there's cost-cutting measures in a school board. So how, when you're working authentically in collaboration with parents, do they get the information that says, we're moving from 1.0 to 0.75, not for cost efficiency measures, but because here's the evidence that your child no longer needs support for this or that?
I love that question. I actually almost went that way and I'm glad they just said that.
Well, they're sick.
That's, we're on the, they're insane. Because I actually used that example and I used those, I said two words intentionally because they were in the conversation. You're reducing and you're cutting. Those were two intentional words that were, were used. Because we think that, I can say this as a superintendent, you recognize these things live and die at the school fence or in, in the classroom. So if the teacher is saying, you know, the, the school board, no, don't talk to me, it's the school board, they're cutting, then we're in, we're in trouble. So we talk a lot about the fact that language matters and that, so when, we, and we've done a lot of coaching around this throughout the system, but think about the two ways that conversations would go with a parent. We're gonna cut support for your daughter from 1.0 to 0.75. You have the exact same conversation, you can say, your daughter's doing really well based on, on our rubric, we're gonna look for two periods of data to increase her independence. Exact same thing. And one is positively focused on how well the student's doing and the other one is focused on undefendable practices. So we like to talk about, we wanna do things on purpose for purposes we can defend. We can defend our work when it's grounded in our focus on independence. So we're, our students tell us what they need and we, we help, so we work with parents, we do our, our rubric process that measures students' independence at school, that's very much shared with parents. And then we talk about what are our goals and then how are we going to get there. So it really is kind of shifting the zeitgeist in a way in terms of, of moving toward a parent coming in and trying to advocate saying, I'm gonna get as much as I can because I think that that's gonna be the best outcomes, to really moving that toward, and this is our work in education, helping us to understand that really the student outcomes are gonna be best when we are partnering and looking toward what's the best possible future for us to be. So it's really a communication piece, but it's very intentional as well.
Yeah, thank you.
In terms of barriers, I was in Dr. Zimbari's chat and I, you know, I appreciated some of the, his talking about systems and policies create culture. And, and then I, I've heard from some of my team and the other talk that was going on a little bit about some of the silos interministerially between the different ministries. And certainly for us, a barrier or a challenge for us, maybe a challenge, an ongoing challenge is Ministry of Ed, MCYS, Ministry of Health. MCYS, and this is the provocative part of the agenda, I guess, this is what. For us in education, you know, we have students from the age of four to the age of 21 possibly. We recognize and embrace the idea of being that community hub and recognize us being the primary point of contact for, for families. And we also have to work really hard at helping to recognize scope of practice, that we are, we are educators, our mandate is education. And there, when we, when we look sometimes at what a student's primary need is, sometimes it resides outside of education. And that's when that partnership between our, our community partners, our clinical partners is really helpful for us because, you know, I have, like, my undergrad degree is in dramatic literature and I got a year of teachers college. And then, you know, I'm in, I'm in class and I'm, and I'm teaching and I'm supposed to be taking on all of these different challenges. And just so helping us to, it's a challenge for us to help people to recognize what's possible in education and what education and what teachers can be expected to do within their scope of practice. So often decisions that are made at the Ministry of Child Youth Services, my observation is that they tend to be prescriptive, they tend to say, we are doing this. The Ministry of Education, because they deal with 72 different school boards, tend to be permissive. So it's, it's local boards make local decisions. So MCYS makes decisions that have tremendous impact on us in schools and in schools, we sometimes struggle to feel like true partners in that process. So we are left with, with managing how we are going to run programs or how we're gonna support directives that come from another ministry where, you know, that's really outside of what our scope of practice is. So we have clinicians, we have our, our BCBA's and our social workers and our psychologists and our speech and language pathologists and we, we work collaboratively professionally as best we can. But in education, our challenge continues to be that, that we are where everything resides and therefore we are experts in everything and we're, we're teachers, we're in education. So understanding that I think is important.
Thank you very much. Okay, over to PDSD and I'll open the question.
I think that, and I agree with my colleagues as well, I think a part, part of the reason why my, Ryan, Tony and I are here is because of the equality. When we look at the social work part and we look at the family involved and what we try to strive for is including the voice of the